I was so grateful about son not to, that would be nice. This is your mother.
Going over to the substation.
Okay.
There on the river road. Yeah, there's the transmission line that comes across.
Yeah.
There it puts town limits. So over by the tire station or the tire factory. But until it gets to that substation, then that's. Appalachian Power and Co probably. Appalachian probably owns the property and the substation. At least two minutes comes down to.
First of all, welcome our new police team to take us to my studio here. Well, we have our work session like this is. Don't mind anything. Mr. Baldwin, our attorney is on in Reed. And. You put in a basic F for. And the lower, if you need regular people that are out here for a few years, you always stay with the help you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Just wanted to start by. Talking about some of the calls for service that we had last month. You can see we responded for two vehicle collision there at the intersection of Valley Streets, Scottville Road, James River. When we got there, we found that two vehicles had collided and one of them were actually going through. Two yards and into the front porch of a residence. The next one was a truck and trailer. That same night. We got a call, guess it was just a little after eight o'clock. Or a truck and trailer had gone through the intersection from James River Road across Irish Road. All of the power lines and a couple of power poles down, threw six of George Vansys, Doug's sheds down through there. Talked it to the driver, it looks like he claimed he pulled the emergency brake to the truck. But after an inspection of the truck, I believe that he thought he pulled it, but he didn't. So when he pulled it into the parking lot, the management steel parking lot. Then set the brake and as he left the truck and went down to the food mine to do some shopping, the truck rolled off of the parking lot. Down across their parking lot, across Scottville or Irish Road. The log trucks, back metal poles grabbed the power lines that were above it, started pulling power poles down and threw the sheds in. Finally located him and you know, I'm sure everybody was aware of that Appalachian Power, VDOT. Nelson Cable, everyone was out there that night, that next morning trying to power and bring back up the residents. Also got called out to the Scottsville Shopping Center for a reckless driver. Reckless driver. When we got there on the parking lot, he was actually standing just outside of the car. Talking to another person, very intoxicated, drinking all night that morning, smoking weed. He was arrested in Dickenson Complex, he drunk in public. We also responded out to the main street for a D O A, met with rescue out there. In fact, one of their residents had been in the apartment for about three days with D O A. So it was. It was a pretty big mess. Wasn't real nice to be there. Missed out. That was a, that was a pretty, pretty nasty scene. Body was transported by staff. New engagements, you can see that we attended the Scottsville volunteer fire department banquet. We participated, I also participated in any of the. Just a number of the other police departments in our region. We also assisted with the annual Scottsville Holiday Happenings events down here in the town. And we participated in the back end bingo fundraiser that I mentioned. Our auxiliary officers. Donated a hundred and eight hours, a hundred and eight hours and a half. For the town. You see the call savings was up a little bit from last year compared to the year before to the town. The department. News, quarterly academy board meeting. And we applied for, received twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the state police for the implementation of our five safety cameras. We've actually got the Fox Safety coming to town Friday. And two of the cameras will be deployed on Friday at the police department. One system will be. Monitoring the north and southbound lanes going in and out of Buckingham, the other ones will be. On the east side of East Main Street, monitoring traffic coming in and out of the Flivanna side. That, that side of the town. And then we've got to get deployment schedules for the other two locations, one on Irish Road. And one at Valley and James River. Soon as we extend that, soon as the camp, the invoice has been sent to Melody and Javier. Payman, and as soon as that invoice is paid, I'll submit it to the state police and they'll refund the town the twelve thousand five hundred dollars. As soon as we spend them on.
Chief question for you about, what was the event in the food line a couple of days ago?
Sunday. Sunday, so. I got a text message from one of our officers that there was an accident in the parking lot at the food bar. I got dressed and went down to the food line. Two county sergeants were on scene. And one of their police officers was on scene. Their investigation through, so they had their accident recon come down because it was a vehicle accident with a death. Looks like a man and woman pulled into a parking space. While he was in, while they were in the store, it looks like someone pulled up fairly close to the driver's side door. So he had to come in through the passenger side door and he's trying to back the car up. The female that was on scene was standing in the B of passengers door. As he put it in reverse, car started going backwards instead of hitting the brake, looks like he hit the gas pedal. Knocked her to the ground and run over her and hit the car. So she was CPR was first aid was, you know, surrendering, but she didn't make it. They've got thatters come down and picked her up yesterday in the medical examiner's office, still come down and do their examination down here.
Welcome to the church.
So very excited to hear.
It was for sure. The other thing I have is I just wanted to let the council know that got notified late last week, Friday, that one of our officer officer. All trust will be leaving the police department, he's getting our police work all together. He's the newest one that we just brought on. He's going to be leaving, him and his wife have accepted a position in Florida. So he's getting out of law enforcement altogether. So what I'm thinking about is he will be. Leaving right after the Fourth of July events that we have here. So I think what I'm going to try to do. When he gives me his. Letter of intentions. I'm hoping to try to get that maybe in March, so we can go ahead and start that kind of process. For the next person. So it's not going to take quite as long, so by the time he leaves, hopefully we'll have that person's. Person selected, background done, and we can get them. Like a road. We'll see how that shakes out, but you know, after. We'll have gotten about fifteen months out of that officer by the time he leaves, so. I didn't think we'd be going through this again anytime soon, but we are. Everyone had an opportunity to look at the stats for this, for the year. This, you can see, we're pretty, pretty busy overall. What we have. Total calls for service just in the town was just under two thousand. Total that the Scottsville PD has handled was just under three thousand calls for service. That's the only town calls and southern Alamo calls helping that A C P D out of that thousand. Over the twelve months, we've moved it right at ninety-six point four percent of the calls for service in the town. It's really good for. Or what will pay off, it's not available. Mr. Payne had asked me to, and I think maybe you all have some of this. Did you want to talk to me about these? These statistics here, the, the traffic accidents statistics that you have. Though I'll let you have this assuming I finish. This, this is, is it relates, I think what prompted it is maybe the, the latest crash that I think reported out here on. At the intersection there, Scottsville Way, Valley Street, James River Road, where the car went down to the house. Mr. Payne wanted to know in the past twelve months or. Not quite twelve months, but the number of accidents we had had in that intersection for days, and it was just about four problems. So you can see that. No injuries, we had five, no visible injuries. Two, so we had a total of seven in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, we had three. Twenty twenty-two, we had two. So we had a total of twelve. So we have a total of twelve in the past three years. And it has increased somewhat, you know, since. I think. When we've got the good witnesses out there, the shopping center, everybody.
That's the way I was reading, I was reading it exactly, fell away. Went from two. Three the next year, we were seven. And the question is, why the increase? We've got a lot of traffic here, but we've also got a new challenge patterns. I get to go to the program. I don't know what it's called, some type of. Study by VDOT as to if it's a, what happens in sections. Maybe in the future, we all should start thinking about some bike traffic control there of some type to. Slowing people down.
That's one of the main problems is thirty-five, you know, they're having a little drop for a job, we got business. I followed down from Charlesville and there's doing forty-five. Fifty-five, we're getting to thirty-five, they're still going to forty-five. Can't beat right on through. Keep the speed on the twenty-five, we didn't thirty-five.
Well, yes, that's the way to work.
We, we, we talked about the.
Want to be feasible for a traffic circle there.
We had scored that a few years ago.
And that's right on the edge of the ground as well.
And the traffic light would be channel maintenance. And not, I priced them a few years ago, they were spent and then.
It was like fifty thousand dollars.
And then maintenance annually, et cetera, so it's an expenditure there for the town. Just due to the increase. I'm always the old guy here. But. I don't think I've seen seven accidents in that intersection in my lifetime. I remember driving, just looking at my house and seeing that intersection. Definitely an increase and we have more traffic.
Well, people don't give a break.
So this is drunk, drug distracted. Stress, family problems, talking on the phone. You like to think everybody that's talking on the phone is having life conversations, you know, they could do the school day funs. Most of the time they're, they're possible with their husband or wife or, or the boss who's driving on. You see a lot of frail old faces when you see these people riding around like kids. So, yeah, I think distraction is, is the worst, there's a black spy, I think, because there's a hill. I'm just wondering if that's the factor. I hate coming. Coming that direction from, you know, from Nancy's house. Past the bank opens for my wife.
The, the. What about for mobile? In your experience, does that work?
It works a little bit.
Right. Now, I have heard, I have heard today have some similar to that, maybe put like a little. Stumble, something like nothing behind the grid. I didn't know. Putting that out would slow people down. Again, like you said, that is no. So. Maybe you're forward in a flash. I, I don't know if you can get me talking, you know, do something.
This might be a good thing for, for, for me to put it on.
We also heard a joint meeting coming up that we could put it as an agenda item.
Put a book in the air of the resident car.
Not sure how much it's gonna, how many crashes it's gonna tip the scale for them, but. You all remember, was it? Few years ago? That I asked somebody to come down and do the traffic stuff for us up there. What eighty-five percentile for all of the traffic. That was just a small percentile that's not those people. So like you were saying, Mr. Payne would probably draw their attention. But this accident, you know, I went back and, you know, that fence there and flew this in place. Like those block some of the view, so you have to pull that a little bit further. And like you said. And that gift kind of blocked some of the view as well, so I mean, it's kind of a two factor, two pronged issue there.
One of the things. If you stop at the stop bar, where it says stop. Way too far, even if they were to move it up, the next thing you know, we might act like increase the angle, so it's going to be counted. So that we, we got situation that.
Get your belt out of the way.
If you think about, at least when the company together was selling, there's more invasions and everything. Moving on. So can you do something about this? He's got a plan.
Maybe they want to take a look at the traffic law. Coming in northern southbound. In and out of the town. You know, take that into consideration with the increase traffic error at, you know, the market.
Fifteen years ago, they did still say, well, thank you also for my safe.
I asked you to call the county. Local, local Iowa engineer and put a bug in her, his ear to see if there's something cheap you can do. To make that intersection more prominent as the dangerous nature of it.
I think the last time I was talking about it was at CNS Motors last year, the year before, with the speed coming through that curve there. And they said, you know, if we put them down. The residents that live near them at nighttime are going to complain about the noise, because you're going to hear. So I mean, that up there might be some of the same because you do have some residents that live up there in that intersection. You may not like that extra noise. Anything else?
Evening, everybody. James with the Scottsville Chamber of Commerce. So last month, we had our holiday happenings and I came and recorded on that. At the last work session and then since then. Our meeting should have been last Tuesday, but with the snow and that everybody trying to shovel out the driveway still, we couldn't come in till tomorrow. So nothing new to report other than we'll be meeting tomorrow and getting our calendar set for the year. Finding out some new stuff about town and I am, one thing that everybody probably knows and able to report is, you know, we've had recently this last month, several businesses. Close up in town and I've done some. I don't know what you would call it, exit interviews, I guess, with them to get some information. I saw a couple more people to talk to, just to. Find out what did, it didn't work for them and what caused the situation and what advice we could give to hopefully the new future men. But man, just want to introduce myself to the new faces in the room, look forward to getting to know you and anything to do with any of the businesses in town. You can give me any time on my cell phone, text, email, all that stuff is good for me.
The question. We have two SCAN representatives, we have Stevie who we know is out, has already gone out of the presidency. And the fact that we're seeing new persons more to SCAN. So anything you want to fill us in on, either one of you at this point?
I'll, I'll introduce myself.
Tell us something about what's going on and.
Right, I will introduce myself. I'm Beth Clark. And they're going to come in, she already now president of SCAN. Wanted to let you know I moved here three and a half years ago. I've been involved with SCAN for three years. Two and a half years on board as president. I got started by going to a pollinator day event. And the first person I met was Stevie Lane, she said, do you have your B sticker? I do not have a B sticker. And she gave me a B sticker and the next tenant was Aaron Ruth. And the next thing they do, we're talking about is board service. I have an extensive background in nonprofit management and also serving on boards and nonprofits, so just seem to like it. And I'd be here with SCAN to help. I do want to tell you, moving here. I do want to tell you, moving here, I was influenced by looking online and seeing how much the town has. SCAN was a big influence to see what is going on in the town. I've worked with arts organizations and people with issues organizations, but, um, that's huge for town this size, as well as restaurants and, um, um, nature. So I'm really glad to be a part of SCAN and even though I haven't seen all your faces, I've been behind the scenes for two and a half years on budgets and accounting and financials and policies and what else I think that might cover it all. She's the brains. Well, then when you can remember it all. So thank you, um, one of the, this is one one introduction. And if Stevie doesn't invite you to the first play of the season, which is coming up the weekend of January twenty-four, twenty-fifth, Friday night. Uh, event, a Saturday matinee, Sunday matinee, directed by our very own James's wife, Courtney Walker. So it's all really good local stuff. It's very good theater. If you haven't gotten your ticket yet, I count about ten people here in the room or fifteen, and if you're plus one, that's thirty tickets. They're inexpensive and then we can start paying that rent. That's how it all works. But it is, but it is very good local theater, having seen it in a lot of other places, but we do hope you as town council and administration will come and support your local events if they can all. So I'd say, James, questions on that?
I didn't hear about it.
Um, thank you.
Pardon?
We have to do it. Uh, I heard Stan was receiving, uh, a, a, a thing out, they just, areas.
Yes.
I let me did it to us, so we can get that out to you.
You know, we have, we're, I think, we have some energetic new board members, very exciting there.
It's gonna be the SCAN line committee is gonna lead that whole cleanup.
Well, we're gonna discuss the cleanup today and we've got some talks to do about it, uh, to help make the whole place successful, so.
We'll work on together, you know, what I've been doing. Thank you. And then you can see, we has a couple.
And then just an update, um, we, uh, were gifted and we now have a billion year, we'll be opening a arts gallery. And the official opening date will be the same day, March twenty-second, um, but we're in the process of minor refresh renovations, getting things ready. Um, and it's where the old River Ben boutique was and we're going to have a true arts gallery and, um, uh, give it opportunity. We, I know you all know this, but we have so many really talented creative people in this area. And, uh, so we'll have a chance to show that all off. Um, we are planning after, when you come to Saturday's matinee, see Grace and Glory, because you're gonna get your tickets online, right? We're gonna have a small, um, open space reception at the, uh, just invite you over to Sue's space and get your ideas about what is that you want for your community gallery. And so we'll hope you join us after Grace and Glory, a couple hours, you know, you know, and your piece of cheese and a glass of water, anything, you know? So, we might do better than that, but, uh, but anyways, we hope that she'll come. And, uh, I'm very excited. This is just, uh, a dream come true for me. Uh, I definitely, I guess, given. And I want to tell you, this young lady here, she absolutely knows what she's doing. And if it wasn't for her, uh, we would not have made it through COVID. We would not have, you know, at least kept the doors open. Um, and so if you have questions about funding and non-for-profits and all that stuff, don't ask me, ask her, you know, so, uh, but I also want to apologize, last month I didn't say hi. I'm not gonna be here, you know, but I'll be across the street, so come see me there, all right? Is that a deal?
Go let you.
Stevie's gonna be landing in the gallery. She won't be a board office owner. But I am on the door. I don't want to be a schmuck on the board. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I don't have anything on the RV. I will say that we, out here, I might be able to jump in on this. I haven't been referred to come on our architect's for a long time.
Yeah.
Um, but I know Brad, one of our members, is an architect, so it might be worth kind of just a name change. So we have an architect on board.
Be nice. Yes, and, uh, additionally, we'll probably have some action items, see what ideas for next month.
Okay.
Uh, but we took that break for, uh, was right, right after you.
Any questions?
All right, my emergency, so we still need to, we did not make, being kind of, the weather, we are to meet this Thursday night continuing to talk about the comprehensive plan and hopefully its final stages. So the Thursday night will be.
That's, that's Tuesday.
We did that last week and I did send the messages, who did, no, everybody got it. But mainly what we, we, we've been working over the last couple of months and pretty much finished with the, the, um, capital improvement plan, which is, um, it needs to be happened, kind of wish this for, uh, any kind of, uh, double bench on our buildings or renovations, so the next five years, so, you know. We're looking at that. Um, we're also looking at donation policy, which will, of, of this, and uh, it's a place, anything, any policies or procedures, uh, we kind of do with that, that's. Public service. Good comments.
Any questions for local services? You guys, you think our work?
Yes, we, we didn't have a minister, we did leave a couple days ago. Uh, and of course, we did a substantial progress on the park and the park was pretty much near completion except for some of the major projects, but we've done a lot of fine tuning, we're waiting for signs and markers and pop, pop, peps and plantings. But the, the major improvements, uh, like a road or a bathroom, uh, I need funding and volunteers, so, so, uh, we're you know, we can do much more, but we're near completion of the park. Uh, that's how we get more funding, volunteers to do some of those bigger projects. So we may not need this at all, but, um, but, you know, made a lot of boxes in the last nine months or so. But also lived, uh, in our waste square, uh, that's for take down that and, uh, yeah, we need, uh, some signs there and, uh, uh, we're gonna need some money for that too, but, uh, but those are our, our major issues.
Though I did talk with, uh, someone who's willing to donate their time with heavy equipment, uh.
Oh, really? Do that road up there?
Fix the road up there. Van Cleve, just still need to get some gravel to be able to put on it and fill those.
I don't know, shall we try to use what's up in our room?
Well, you know, after talking to him, he's been up there and looked at it once before, and I think he gave the town a quote on what it would cost for the gravel. But I know there's a pile of gravel within the, I guess, the bit wrap down there.
Right.
That's probably gonna be needed for going down to Lake itself on that section. So probably need to focus on the upper section.
Fill those holes, those huge holes.
It's got worse.
It's not really that, yeah, yeah.
But he's willing to donate his time and equipment to go in and do it. If we can get the gravel put down there.
Well, don't you?
Don't invest them.
I'll give the name, the, 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 really, that's really hard to get that, um. But the, the point I would say, if somebody is donating, um, as a machinery, is there any way we can pay for it to gravel? I mean, it, it. We got money and budget moves. So we did that.
I can shake a couple trees too, as far as dump truck guys, that you, sometimes they get extra loads and sometimes you get discounts and you can go to Lockstone. I don't imagine there'd be. I mean, they might say no, but it's worth asking if they would like to donate, I don't know.
Not sure if you want to shake a tree, but we'll be shaking a truck.
I don't know if I can shake this.
But that is not a good idea, a way to do that.
Yeah.
Any questions for you?
Well, that's everything. Ryan wanted to do, oh, it's got to be advanced, so he, he's gonna come to one of our meetings and maybe talk about, uh, what he has in mind.
Javier, what are we doing about the emergency preparedness? Uh, Eileen's gone.
Yeah, so Eileen's out of town. She was liaison for EPC. Um, Jack was able to provide me, uh, three items, an update from the last meeting we had. So, um, they took a little bit of break from holidays like other committees. Um, Eileen and, uh, the Chair Jack Maxwell with the group has been working on their emergency ops plan, so that's still in progress. And then, uh, I was working on with them to have a meeting with, uh, our county emergency management, uh, director, Brandy, to have, to follow up on some questions on that local emergency operations plan. Um, so, uh, one of the questions for the annual meeting next month also is, um, how you want to, uh, set committee assignments. Um, but other than that, uh, that's what we, they were working on for the last month.
Uh, here, how have they done related to the signs? I mentioned it. I, I mean, who was in charge of, or was it profitable for everybody, Brandon? And I'm thanking myself because we had a nice sign on our property now because of that, then how many are still possible out there?
We, we hit, we did all of those that were not in compliance. A majority of them came back. Haven't taken an inventory on those that are not. But the last thing we wanted to do with the funding we got from CACF was send out a general letter. So the letter's ready, the addresses are ready. We just kind of have to stuff envelopes at this point and mail them out um, for that last round of funding. So I think we had a lot of success because those that even didn't reach out to us, um, you'd, signs would show up around town. So, uh, there's a few businesses that I noticed that I sent letters and then, uh, they didn't even reach out and we just went and put something that they liked a little bit more than our E nine one one sign, but they stayed at least with the zoning ordinance compliance of signs. So, um, Jack and I will work on, uh, sending that general letter, uh, to provide anybody who, who is in compliance but wants a E nine one one sign. Uh, uh, for signs from that funding.
The one thing I was gonna say, and maybe I say this to our two new, this is okay, I think, I think. With the, one thing that somebody said to me about first keeping the town concerned was that projects take some passion, somebody being involved in them. This is an example of something that Eileen championed and thankful it's actually having a good impact on, in the town. There was another person, Zach, who used to be on the town council, who often was irritated by the railroad and he would bring it up quite frequently and we ended up getting some progress on that. I mentioned it on the say, that your passion for our overtime, often it's something that you champion or bring to up, it will make others have done that. And so I don't know what it is, you guys will be able to talk about that one next week, but thankful for what she did. We were out of compliance and I was glad that.
If we can't find a counselor that wants to do EPC, is that gonna get back burner or is you gonna, are you okay with letting that committee go without a council supervision?
Probably technically a tough first to do, so about being, that is a job in a different city, continue being certainly one of the the council people, you know, meaning, actually clean house one in a city. Uh, whether she wants to continue to, you know, hit, increase the bottom, uh, what it, whatever.
I have to be able to commit, um, uh, when it first started, it's in, I've got obligations now, it keeps me waiting for the meeting, so I can't. Um, uh, but how many people do we have as a committee now?
Paul here?
Books around, but like the core group is Eileen, Jack, I, and then, uh, Michael Culpepper, and then I would say we have a battle revolving like three or four.
Yeah.
Um, that kind of come in and out. It's, it's, it's a rough time to at these points. It's three P M on a Thursday. So if you work.
Maybe you just need like once or twice a year.
I think they even discussed that.
A whole lot of them.
Yeah. But it's paid dividends. I know with this last snow that was coming through, John Prandy reached out to Javier and I got us both on a conference call, was letting us know what the county's plans were for the snow. Any, um, shelters and stuff like that, warming stations. I mean, it was very beneficial. Yeah, and then it's led to little efforts like Tiger Fuel assisting us with the fuel cachet.
They could, they could have done that without, yeah.
Could have.
Yeah, but it became, the emergency contact is administered from the county. So it could be done without.
If it's a self-sustaining organism, you know, leave it alone. If it's doing some stuff, we might take on that. Kind of makes me think about doing that with the events committee as well.
Yeah.
Actually, I'd be mildly inclined to express interest in that. It might be, I don't know if she'd want to, but offer that position to her to kind of head that up.
I'll talk to her, so we're so interested. But, uh, you know, since last week that, for me, we were in a, we could have been here. But it was just a cold train.
Since, since Jack's here, let me just put this out there, probably I missed something, but we had a snowstorm. There wasn't a lot of snow, but there was some ice and uh, we had freezing and refreezing. Um, we had a power outage that affected, um, everywhere from Keene to almost Glenmore, out to Woodridge and back to the river. It lasted for a few hours. The government declared a state emergency for the state of Virginia. Now, and I know, uh, Jack works hard with his past horse, et cetera, but where was, where was our emergency fairness on the worst that we've had this year? I didn't see it all the emails we get. Anybody else see him? Jack, what were you doing that day?
I didn't have power.
Okay, that's my point. That's my point right there. You can't rely on, on one person to man something that so many people could depend on. In fact, it's with, uh, the FEMA Virginia emergency, yeah, Mall County and the way the police file arrest can work, it's somewhat redundant. Uh, personally, um, I don't see the need for the committee. I, I've got seven apps on my phone. I've got a, a, a battery powered radio, I've got a TV and a dog in box with this stuff. So I've got all of the alerts, I've got the backpack, I'm ready to go. And of course, you can't tell people on the act of emergency, but if, if we take, we've got a go-to um, person for, um, access to information, which is, yeah, got in it, Jack, I'm sure we get it secondhand, he has a scientific information. Oh, I just think it's unnecessary and redundant.
Counselor Payne, just to follow up on your point, uh, there may be redundancy, but I, I think she just mentioned that actually was helpful. There was an aspect of it that had been, could it have come in on the way, sure? And I, I simply would say, I think it's, the fruit has been there. The question is gonna be maintained or not, I don't know. But I think it's been valuable and I, I would hate to stop something that has been successful so far, but we have to see what, how it would be doing for us.
And I would tend to agree with you as well, but it doesn't seem to be costing the town any money or additional time in council, I understand. I don't know. Javier's just spinning it, but I don't think he's raising any red flags by this time, but, uh, I think it's worth seeing where it goes.
I think also I just, I just, that's really, that committee has to help with, uh, cleanup or, or, you know, support kind of thing rather than first response, you know, that kind of thing. You know, like he was out shoveling snow, which is really nice last week and, uh, you know, maybe he spoke with, uh, you know, clean up for hurricanes and things like that. So I think to be, redefine to what they can do, but not, uh, not fault, but, you know, attack.
Yeah, I was just saying this, you know, the worst place so far, if people are depending on the town of Southfield, you have a place where they get all the information they need. It didn't work that day, but, and that's all I'm saying.
I can just jump on the snows, making you think it's been a while since we've had a good storm, except for this last week. Should we send out something to the businesses and homeowners about our removal policy? I believe it's the business owners that are responsible to shut hole in front of businesses. I could be wrong.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, that'd be good.
Why don't we get Chamber to do that? Set up those fellow members in the chamber and not a removal.
Is there official policy that we can send that?
There's more interest since you know, there's a lot of people on their business clear watch the snow.
But you know, I do think Jam and and Jack too, the minutes, they were out there, you understand, and they were, they got the businesses. And there were some business owners doing that too, but they got that whole.
Yeah.
Uh Treasury report. Yeah, so. So the first item for Treasury's report is uh I was going to report out that uh planning to present a draft budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six during our February work session. Um I've been working, as Bill mentioned earlier, with Government Service Committee on developing a CIK plan, a capital improvement plan. So it's a five year plan out on a capital projects for the town. Um hopefully with the final tweaks that uh we discussed during the government service meeting last week, we'll be able to present in February also. And then uh Melanie will be reaching out to our new council members to set up a meeting just to discuss in general our current fiscal year. And then that might be a good on onboard an opportunity to get um them uh well worth for that February meeting where uh town council will be discussing budget again. For beginning our budget cycle. Um beyond that, uh Melanie completed the November twenty twenty four financial statements and will work on the uh December for our January regular session. And then uh town staff has been uh reaching out repeatedly to our auditors, R F C, about our fiscal year twenty twenty four audit, which we discussed with town council with the uh completed with the new year. Um and then we were also uh trying to follow up on a uh commitment to a scheduled presentation for town council about that. Uh so we'll keep trying.
Any questions for Javier?
And there's an ad grant floating around. It's up in.
I've not touched that again yet. Um I think what we were left off was for me to see if I could make an attempt for this spring. So I could pull back into that work. Um I think it would be pretty beneficial.
Uh that one had to be redeemed still.
Uh USDA, yeah. So the USDA grant. Um I sent over the last month all the material they needed. Um they recently emailed me today and I talked with uh uh the chief right before the meeting. So they need a few last uh serial numbers and uh quotes a second time. And then hopefully that's that last step to that site visit. Then at that point, we can get uh reimbursement on that uh for the twenty twenty three police vehicle, right? Just for context for everyone. So uh fifty something, the vehicle was no more than that.
Fifty sixty, sixty one, sixty two thousand.
Cause the vehicle was forty three and then getting it out. So we previously for new council members using USDA facilities grant um and it i- it's a percentage grant percentage uh uh loan, but it's a competitive program for rural. We use it for the what, the last two or three?
At least. Involved that pickup truck that I'm driving now back in two thousand sixteen. Been used that far back.
Okay.
Weight percentages have changed now. Was seventy five, twenty five. Now it's what eighty five, fifteen. We have to pay the eighty five.
Yeah, it's a big change.
It's a big change. That was all based on the uh census, the last census.
We've also been working on getting our um meals tax collected. I've got basically almost everything that's late. We've gotten collected up to date. There are still a couple stragglers out there and a couple of businesses that are waiting on their final um meals tax reports. So.
So we're in much better position than last month when we reported.
That's good. That's very good.
And we're also up to date on sales taxes of the county.
And then it might be worth mentioning to the uh Chamber President also, uh business licenses are coming up uh March first. So we'll be sending out letters for this twenty twenty five business license.
Good. I still have a couple stragglers. I don't know if you were able to get a hold of the gentleman up there at the antique place.
I've not been able to catch you there.
I can't see where they've ever had one. So I don't know how we want to handle that. Do you want to go back or how long they've been there or?
Or you can go back three years.
Three years.
Yeah. Or you can decide to go forward if you get money, you know. But uh three years is the most you can go back.
Okay.
Unless you can prove that they defrauded you, but that's probably not probably worth doing.
Okay.
Any trade your impressions? Uh for the short, to the point, because the holidays being uh what they were and oh I've never, I haven't done a whole lot of extra greater activities of them uh Javier, Javier and I, you know, with this park and uh C V and uh learning about the uh plants, the albury. And uh how Stanford's doing and so a lot of uh good things gonna happen, I think, with them acquiring that building on the street, which will have empty buildings there. Um in Javier and myself, a couple of candidates for the uh farmer's market manager position and we have a lady who's had a bowling, bowling it over in the center. The decision will be made soon. Most farmers market has to be cranked up in February. And then um more of our chamber awarding, so I'll report on that next year. That's very much. You gotta start working on it.
Oh, then start talking.
All the vendors, lot of farms, all that stuff. So that's why I wanted to get some of that slot by the first day. So we'll post all that. Mr. Bowley, anything that you have for us this evening?
Um I we finished, as you know, uh the uh resignation of Meredith Hives, when she resigned, we had to get uh the judge she's still of both Savannah and Almar certain court to uh have a special election, which is scheduled for November two thousand twenty five for her position. Uh both of those orders have been entered and I've sent them to Javier. And then Mr. Payne came along and put me through my paces again with uh his uh reappointment office and resignation, but that was interesting. Uh doing some business license matters right now for Javier and and uh Mr. Townsend, Mr. Whitney, it's a pleasure to meet you in person and I'll be sending you an email, an email to Mark to uh give you a little orientation of uh briefly what I do and and some things you should be on the alert for.
Right.
Look forward to working with both of them.
Same here.
Any questions, Mr. Bowley? Uh we'll go back to Javier and uh what was going on?
Yeah, so update on the town trucks. So we purchased a twenty sixteen Toyota Tundra uh for the maintenance department. Hundred and forty five thousand miles, a little under twenty thousand, five dollars on there. Um reliable truck, good condition, four wheel drive, and uh good price point considering the current car market. Um we bought car seats and amber lights, floor mats. And then uh we currently have to put a town decals on it, you know, town maintenance, same as the last Colorado. Um town staff's working on the disposal of the Colorado. So we got a few quotes on what it'd be for uh uh not demolition, well, um.
That's right.
Sounds great.
That's great.
Uh and then um Jim will work on looking at if there's anything we can do to fix that gator.
I've had like three people talking about wanting to buy that truck.
He sent them all over.
I will send them your way.
No, maybe you post something like on Google where they put, you say, you know, that's off.
Yeah.
Everybody knows about it. That a lot of people like it. Vehicle truck and fix it after seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, just to say this in private with that, you're gonna get, we would get more of that way than we would for just a piece of metal.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'd be more than happy. Uh I'm not gonna rush on it. It's okay up there. Uh so I'll try to get it to a good price. Uh beyond that, uh I already provided a update on the USDA grant previously. So we're uh doing our final touches. And then I was talking with Bill previously, we had a, we purchased a sign from essentially the sign company that B dot uses uh for uh Bay Creek nature area. We made that purchase in the summer and they were originally scheduled for October to place a sign. You'd be going north, you'd see it on your right before you take that right to go up.
I admitted that as well.
Yeah, um they've been delaying it, but they updated me today. Um so they're gonna look at installation um week of the thirteenth this week. And then uh hopefully they'll have it done by the twentieth. Uh they had a little bit of issues at some point with some of the power lines or some of the underground lines. So hopefully they'll move forward from what they discussed today. And we'll wrap that up uh one less uh um task off of a Parks and Rec committee.
Does it advertise the lake or does it advertise the park or is it just the park?
Think the park from the details we provided. Um and then that that would be in there for uh.
Javier, did you wanna talk about that?
Yes, yes. So um how would you provide, you provide a little bit of context about the conversation today?
So as counsel is aware, there was a fire down East Main Street, like three seventy, East Main Street, three sixty, East Main Street. Uh a couple of months ago, we got a complaint. Another complaint from a neighbor about their trash and the debris that has built up around that residence down there. Um several other complaints about open air burning and things like that, but uh myself and uh one of the other officers went down. And there's no open air burning going on. The person's taking ash from a wood stove, not from the driveway, putting it out just like she's supposed to. Um but the neighbor, I went and talked to the neighbor that made the complaint, explained to her what was going on. Really you know, there's no ordinance that really prohibits the means refuge. It's just trash, garbage. Um Javier and I were talking and we thought maybe we just got this lady off of drugs. She had clued for a couple of months. Um how can we help her kind of clean up that area down there? And I don't know, we can just talk and throw around ideas and idea of maybe the a dumpster. And if we can get a big dumpster down there and set it on the property give her two or three weeks. I think Javier's already talked to one of the disposal companies and I'll turn it over.
Yeah, so Mel- Melanie assists me. Our current disposal company would give us uh what is sixty eight ton?
I had, he's gonna give us a roll off dumpster. Um it's a a large one that we could put out there and he's gonna cut the price for us. Um it it would probably run us in the rounds of probably five to six hundred dollars. He said he would cut the price to four hundred dollars even. And that's uh dropping it and coming and taking it away.
Um and for example, we have uh warnings for, you know. We, you, town council could have periodically considered, it's the same as our snow warnings our grass ordinance, um giving a notice with enough due time uh to a resident to either, you know, cut their grass and pick up litter. This situation, you know they had fire. And then um I think they're they're well with their they're having a difficult time. I'll put it that way. Um and then in general, this three sixty, as Alex knows, is right in our historic Bona Lae district. So from the side yard to the backyard, we have a lot of uh refuges um right in our historic downtown. Um so so.
The only thing that we're worried about is setting precedence that if something happens somewhere else, that we're gonna do the same for that person. So one of the ideas we had brainstorming today was maybe take the dumpster instead of setting the dumpster on her property. Set it in front. Use one of the the parking spaces. And maybe post say, hey, this side of town, we're gonna have a dumpster. If you have something that you would like to throw away or you can't get
I will fill it very fast.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, what's gonna happen, people are gonna drive by and oh man, this I can drive, I can throw something on the way to work. Next thing you know, what's gonna happen is the actual, we have the dumpster for this actual project that now everybody else is gonna be loading it. Next thing you know, we're gonna have someone, they're gonna have to pay, have that all off. And if I'm having to actually, there's a certain part, there's a certain fee, you could have dumped yourself. Then afterwards, it's taken in a way and there's an additional fee for the weight this quick inside dumpster.
Well, he's gonna cut us a bit. He's only gonna charge us four hundred dollars. He's not gonna charge us per ton or any of that.
But that's what the cannons on charge, you know. By weight.
Right.
I've written three of them.
Yeah, he said he's gonna, he he will eat the difference because he it's Bryant. And he said, you know, I grew up in this town. He said, he knows what's going on down there. And he said he would cut us a deal.
Just four and a half that rate and.
Four hundred dollar flat rate.
How long, how long is that for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So if council were to approve it, I I could be on there and work with the uh person that's staying there, trying to figure out and just when would be a good time to deliver it? The expectations of the town to get the debris loaded in it, get it cleaned up and moved out of there. So it's not gonna be impending for this to get taken care of. It's
Would be worth rich announcements for our net.
It did. About today, I was explaining to them how we used to, when we had town cleanup day, we fire, fire up around the fix off. As uh if we incorporated the dumpster, they would put it all the way slot down there on over water safety link. Uh on tourist's office and well, community day. My shield never get to me. I mean, we we can all disavow, we're the movers and open, definitely put it down with everybody.
Well, how much stuff is it?
It's a lot. It's a lot.
It's the whole side of the house, running the back.
I think it's gonna fill up a big dumpster. I mean, it's it's the backside going up the driveway. It's the backside and the entire side of the house.
Cause the first thing I imagined Greg was like, I'll get Jim, we got a new truck. And both of you guys said, no, that's not Jim, Jim does not have the back.
So so working with her, you know, I don't know, the uh cert folks would be interested in maybe trying to lend a hand. You know, help her get the stuff loaded into the dumpster. Maybe it takes just a couple of day or a week to get it loaded up, but it's gonna be a job. She doesn't drive. She has no vehicle. Has no phone, nothing.
One, one thing I was gonna say, just to support your effort in being both a dumpster diver and also somebody I am. Uh but somebody also this last year I have really not paid attention to the large items that you can take to the Charlotte, to the county belt. And I took a lot of paints and pesticides and all the stuff you can take when it was the right time. So one thing I was gonna say, just coming back to us is I think it's wise for us to both do more to push the recycling center over there and to help the town learn about the bigger chunk stuff. But I would say this is kind of a one off situation. This is a one off that I would, under your authority, chief. In other words, under your authority, what I'm hearing here is and I'm so under, under your authority or under the police, in other words, this is different than just throwing cause if if you guys, if if you throw a dumpster anywhere, everybody throws stuff in there. It doesn't matter. The guy who lives ten miles down the road sees with the dumpster and throws it in there. Because I'm a dumpster diver, I've been a few several times with putting stuff in, uh when it takes it out. But anyway, it's all that to say, back to you. Somehow, if you do it, it has to be for that person specifically. I don't know the right way to do it. But I hear your hearts and I don't know, they've been doing some other way where the others help. But uh if we don't make it specific, everybody will throw stuff in there. And and again, I'm a fan of And again, I'm a fan of us, we used to do large item pickup day, that wasn't, we had to pay for that, maybe we do that in the future. But that's not this, this is a specific thing.
I'm not just thinking about help, that's living at home, I'm also thinking about the neighbors that in the business that's across. The driveway and this, this neighbor was very passionate, she's lived there for five years. We finally got all of the illegal activity out of there, now it's the. Junk that's there, um, and Javier and I spoke at Flint today, trying to figure out a way. How do we help the town, it helps her too, but how do we help the town look a little? Better, I mean, it's right across the street from one of our other businesses there, so it's right in that. Intersection, very street there, that's.
Right beside the dollhouse.
Is she the homeowner?
One of them.
One of them.
You have a book talking about.
This place is in the historic district, five different, somewhere, you know, this house is located in the historic district. Therefore, any houses in the historic district have to maintain a level of.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we have a good amount of ordinances, uh, I think enforcement is really the. Or the teeth behind enforcement tends to be the issue, most of our residents are very, very willing to. Fix things, but there, you know, there's a couple bad apples, but I think this is more of a, she can't do it herself.
And I know Javier and I. Oh, and I'm not sure that we have an ordinance that even addresses what's going on there.
You, you can, there's state code provisions that address this situation, but the. The uh devil's in the detail and your remedy is to go in and correct the situation yourself and then. Uh seek to collect from the property other than the cost for doing what you did.
Do you have to give notice, Jim?
Yes.
Of the intent of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's got, it's um, it's, it sounds like it's a. Little, how to hide and sing it, but it's, it sounds like it's general just.
Everything.
It's a public health problem is what it sounds like, yeah, so you could, you could do it, but then, then you've got to impose a lien on the property and. Try to collect your costs and that's, because you don't collect taxes, it's more difficult to collect money. Uh, than 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 the normal, let's say, the county of Almont, for example. I mean, the procedures involves getting a lot of due process, you get, you're gonna win, but then you've got a judgment and then you have to collect it.
Again, Dan, this is just an idea, I'm. Javier and I are just trying to think of a way how we could help her get it cleaned up, she seems very. Eager and energetic to get it cleaned up, so I don't think she has the means to get cleaned up and. Yeah, I I don't know what these are of of the town or is it the right use of taxpayer monies to do something like that? Um, I don't know, that's not for me to say, well, I've brought it to the body and. You will make that decision on the best way to do it, but. I just don't know, I I reached out to one of my partners at uh at ACPD with their heart team up there and. Kind of what Javier's done, they have someone that they've worked with that has done something like this in the past, they've. County or someone paid for the dumpster, yet they provided the cleanup staff to get rid of. So it's kind of a give and take between a public entity and the community all pitching in together to try to get it resolved and cleaned up.
Well, the other issue is uh it's shockingly easy to fill dumpsters and if you pay for four hundred dollars, we get a quarter of the trash out. That's an issue, it might be worth just picking away volunteer wise, uh, maybe getting, like I said, having Barnett at least drop us a truck off. And.
One of your buddies with dumpster.
Yeah, yeah, that'll work, a little high in the air, but. But yeah, if you pay for dumpsters, I will. And into a hole that's not.
Maybe you go down and take a look. I I just don't know if a dumpster, the dumpster is gonna be close to you.
Behind the uh little rat lot up there, I think right next to where it's gonna go, hold the. Kind of what I'm thinking, um.
With paper fuel for the equipment. You could load that dumpster and what, what you can do is machine, you can do it thirty minutes quickly, it can be four or five hours by hand.
We just gotta remember it's close to the home and I know Jay's working on the. Water pipes and stuff out there along the street, so I'm not sure if you put a piece of heavy equipment. I'm not sure if it would cause any, great idea, I just don't know what the impact would be. And I'm not sure, big pieces of heavy equipment is gonna get up and start to drive there to get back there, I just. But anyway, something.
Javier, get your attention, I was just wondering, where's the maintenance truck tonight?
Oh, maintenance truck, I spoke with him about dropping it off now in town, I didn't check, but I'm. Yeah, I'm almost sure it's up at the at the shed, so I had a conversation with him.
Well, except the shed.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
Yeah, it's a, I talked to him last week and asked him, hey, this week.
I'm not talking, oh, I'm talking about the new.
Yes, the new one.
I admitted it was all today, that's it.
Yeah, so I spoke both to you and Eddie, I believe in the last week about it, I asked him to start putting it off at the shed. Um, I didn't talk to him personally today about it, but I can check tomorrow.
I thought you used to see him, you know, the town truck down here. And I hadn't, I hadn't seen it though.
He for a good time would drive off, drop off his truck and then pick up from there so he could start and end the day. Um, he was a little bit concerned about it not having, uh, first attempt tax, doesn't have an emblem. Um, but I asked him, hey, could you keep it down here, I think it would be appropriate for him to take it if he had an on-call or something. Like a snowstorm, I mean, ask him for just the mileage on it, uh, to keep it in town. So I'll, I'll call up with him tomorrow to make sure that the direction I gave him last week will be adhered to.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, uh, like I said, just so you see, seeing one down here, of course. You have a policy about how you. As a community, so we all understand that.
Yes, okay.
Anything else for your report before we're going to uh inbox?
No, I think last week was. The local resident.
Well, I had a, an idea for a event, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we've been talking about doing a, like a Scottsville day, we leverage, um, you know, the the parks we have here and then I talked to. Luke in font about um Scamland and so we were thinking have, you know, a morning five K and get kids and adults out for that, right? And then kind of open it up and do a, do an event where we have, you know, Scottsville two hundred, you know, X. Years of of being here, probably in the September time range, um, and there's not a UVA game going on on a Saturday. And uh that it would be really a, a concept and a thought to put out there for people to see if they're interested in it, if they are, you can start. Pulling things together on that, I don't think from a monetary perspective, it's, you know, significant, we'll do. But hopefully we have some signs that we can already reuse and do a little bit of advertising that's gonna be, but that was. That was the idea and if people are interested in that, we can, you know, move it forward, get some more details about it, but, you know, get all the. The chops out and and uh, you know, the retail people here.
Get somebody to head up our books committee. You know, we had books of the Nancy, oh. He and I have been talking about last year, he talked, uh, he would like to see us like they.
Okay.
At Scottsville.
Right.
The something, he went.
Okay, huh, okay. Okay.
So, I might be slurring, I'm talking to you also.
If I, if I, yeah, I can get his name. And I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't said, I'm Brian Highland, I run the parks and recommend it, so.
But yeah, it sounds like a good evening, we usually, you've been in historically, maybe something like Scottsville day in fall, September.
Yeah.
So we got a little time to work on it.
Right, yeah, nine, not, mine must give us some time, it's after the fourth, so I know that's a big event so far.
If you can touch upon the air, we'll see how we can get our events committee going again.
Okay.
I'll see you on Saturday, I'll probably.
Okay, yeah, great, and I can get his name from you and maybe I can act up and do something, that'd be great. All right, that's all you need, thank you.
Yeah, so the first two topic is a residency approved, uh, Scottville wastewater generator project, um, so. Uh, late last year, we had both, um, service authority and Ramana wastewater. Um, present or make presentations to town council, one of the things both of them mentioned was that. Um, they're working on a backup generator for the local water treatment plant that's uh over right past Warrior Park. Um, they've been working on that since, I think, before the summer of last year at this point. Um, and they were looking to uh get an easement across Warrior Park. Um, towards the baseball diamond side, the further side, for like a better term. Um, so that they can use that backup generator not only to work, to have electricity for the uh treatment plant, but also that. For like a better term, that substation, that little uh building behind the farmer's market, um, so. Uh, engineers both at the service authority and Ramana have looked over it. Um, I spoke with Jim about some of the details about uh easements in general, um. And then um, I also spoke to Tim Carr last week to shore, but um, what I have included here is a draft. Which I think still needs a few small revisions, um, but in general, it would create a deed of easement. Would be something that the town council would need to decide and then also the plat for that um easement. So really, it's just to put that line down and providing some accessibility.
This is a standard Almark County Service Authority easement form and you've signed a bunch of these in the past. Um, and the service authority has uh. In- invested a lot of money on the infrastructure of the town, not, not a million dollars, a lot more than a million dollars over the last twenty years. Um, there has to be one change with this easement, it has a general warranty, it's covered, it's a title. Provision, if you bought a home, you're permitted without a permission, you've obtained that language before. Uh, but the town can only convey by special warranty of title, um. Which is a limitation on the general warranty of manner of conveying the estate and I've communicated that to the lawyer for the service. Staff are changed, it looks fine to me. And then also, like I told Javier, if you've got any bushes over there that are gonna be affected by the project. Normally you can keep what, unless it's a tree, it's going to interfere with the waterline in the future years, you can generally keep. A small bush, you know, if you can, if it's reasonably out of the way of where they're gonna put the ditch where they'll put the line in. So I, that's what I'll do, some relief if we've got some uh landscaping there, it's gonna be effective.
Those will just be on the docket for next week.
Yeah, for the revisions, staff is recommendation is uh for town council to approve that easement. It improves the resiliency of a public service here, um. Spoke with, if you have any questions, I spoke to Doc Anderson, who presented for us previously, um, but please pass that along.
And this was a good opportunity for Javier to have a chance to. Learn about what the the town property, where the deeds were, where the files were and all that sort of thing, and we do have a file.
Yeah, forty eighth, the original deed.
And so you, you're keeping it in a, in a far box or you keep these documents somewhere as safe, okay?
That's why I was.
I mean, not that, not everything that's important is recorded in the clerk's office, cause it's a note, a record notice system, but. It it it, it's good to know where his documents are.
Yes. Next, I'm. Um, so the second one was, this was brought up previously last year, um, we updated and I provided in the uh. In the agenda packet back in October, town council threw the policy and resignations and appointments. Um, one of the recommendations I had with uh. Uh, or I'm providing is, um, there's a little bit of lack of clarity with board zoning appeals. About what or if we had a deadline for uh individuals interested in in uh. In town council uh appointing them to a board, so one thing I wanted to recommend to town council might be to. Include a revision with some kind of policy about, um. Essentially, what'd be the last day or moment you could provide a recommendation to uh you guys or. Provided, I don't wanna use the word application, uh, petition the council uh for uh for an appointment at some board that you guys have.
I think two or three days, I mean, you know, it's a state, yeah, and. You know, this last one, it just, we're zoning, let's see, like, that's about three months and. So they can apply today, you know, I think it should like deadline all the time.
I knew it must be like a year, man, I just want it to be done, I think we've seen this every meeting.
Anything we post out, I think should be pretty good, some of those. Just that, like, we don't have applicant or something to say, we'll reopen it, like we did with the. A few, few positions, but, you know, these are just.
What if I just put language for thirty days and then we could try to put it to bed next week?
Well, some are saying that the uh. The acceptance of candidates for a position, we'll be there in thirty days after the initial announcement of the. Whatever, my check with our legal counsel has worn back for us. So, once we, whatever date we offer this position as being open in thirty days, when there is the end of the second.
That would work and and but then you have to realize that. All these policies can be, if you, if you need a particular situation to vary that, the county council has the right to do that.
It doesn't have to be, you know, we're zoning the needle, so I've been in the office, both. Technically, Javier set a date for the seven, uh, and two, three more people came in at the. Four o'clock on the afternoon of the last day, they said, oh, we wanna put our even at two. And I don't feel like it's something disappointing, like you didn't make the interview. So what their reason is for you to be on.
So, so then just set it, just like Bill proposed, set it.
Yeah, but uh, I, I actually don't really, yeah, I think unless there's uh many of them, I would say it would be necessary. Cause we only have two applicants for, for this, right? So what, you know, the, the only qualification though for this is uh residency and willingness, you know, we need bodies, so. I don't, I think it's a kind of a waste of time to do an interview, um, I mean. It's not a job, but I, I maybe meet and greet kind of thing, but you know, pretty, what kind of questions you gotta ask to. You know, we didn't interview, I've been on three committees and I only had one interview and uh, I just think that, I'm glad we're doing this. Close to the retirement, we've been doing our own interviews for a while, but, but anyway.
The interviews aren't by any means exciting, but I think every, I think every level of those you have gives us a little bit of. Yes, we're making sure the right people are in position, so, and it's not fun, but I think it is, in my opinion, wise to. We have more than two applicants for the position than we should.
Uh, yes, is there an application, you actually have an application for a position?
No.
Is there a request of application for, we actually have an application?
Well, that's for volunteers.
So this is, uh. So we don't really have that, so an application is basically basically an email saying I'd like to be part of this committee, that's.
For appointments, because back in October, we made a volunteer on one pager.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, um, town council discussed last year, um. For, uh. For, uh, to discuss nominations for the board of zoning appeals, um, in January of twenty twenty five, so I think. So we're email, I just sent a quick email to everybody who was interested this time last month, um. Uh, currently it's two, as Bill mentioned, it's, uh, Mr. Munson and, uh. Stephen Meeks who, uh, emailed back expressing interest, um, and then the third one who was. This time this month had interest was, uh, Sidney Pugh and he emailed back also saying that.
Zach was wants to see, we had four people.
Yeah, and then he, uh. Yeah, so, uh, you you would make a recommendation to the, I believe, the circuit court and then, uh, Jim would pass that along.
Right, because it's up to the judge to make the selection, not the town council. That's fairly new, because I I was down there and I never. That's how they've been doing.
And we're sure working on those policies.
Yeah, so Bill Heisen shared a, um. A draft, um. That's included in your packet, uh, during the last meeting, Bill, if you could help me out.
A month, I guess, and, uh. You know, this this whole policy. Very difficult because it's, uh, you know, you want to be inclusive and want to be fair. But, uh, you know, it's it's not like we're gonna be signed, it's, uh, you know, deciding on like who's deserving and how much to you, and so I. I actually think we talked with Almar, you know, whatever, have ineffective committees, uh. Come up with these ideas and. There's gonna be favors, of course, even with the committee's gonna be favors, and so. I don't know, I I'm not crazy about donating, uh. Money to nonprofits when we have all these reasons to have, but if you do, and I think we need to do it fairly and, um, and open it up to, you know. Community, local community, so anyway, this is what we came up with. That it has to be something that's benefiting the town, presence of town and, uh. And it's legitimate nonprofit. Um, so, but how to do this is a challenge, you know.
One thing that I I will say is that we as a town have tried to have. A very supportive relationship with Stan and also the Boys and Girls Club, which has meant financial implications to the town and. I think that's something we're. Viewing as really important to be supportive of both of them and. The idea of recognizing that there are other worthy entities and at the same time saying, what is the role of the town? Related to helping with nonprofits, so some of it. Goes back to a difference in philosophy, you might say, on the council, and you guys bring your own thoughts in terms of how we look at it. Uh, but that's, uh, we historically had. The support going back a long time with Stan and a long time with Boys and Girls Club and those. Relationships are really important to the town and I have to think ongoing support for those is is really important. And I say, as we talk about it as in the future, that's kind of where this comes from a little bit.
Everybody take this all and make a addition or changes it and then we will look at it. Next week.
So we don't need votes about whether we wanna do it, we have a vote. Who are ready to? We don't have the money. Well, I'm making a budget, anyway, I I thought a lot about this, I look at the budget just like a family, but, you know, we we got a certain amount of money. And and we gotta take products and if we don't have the money to give, do, like I used to. Some years I'll get more than others. And if we're gonna give to the charity, you know, if we have the money, we just bought a truck. That's, uh, an issue with the towns, three thousand, whatever, five thousand dollars, whatever. And we got roads to fix thing and we, you know, maintenance concern and tools and. So anyway, I just, that's my concern is that we're, some of these organizations have more money than we do. So, uh, anyway, they should be donating us. But anyway, that's that's the issue that I had with, uh, with this a little bit. You know, the Voice Girls Club is a great thing, but you know, I looked at it, they got, they gave fifty nine thousand last year. And so we're getting, so we're doing it double, we're getting money and Almar's getting money. And they do a great job and they do fundraisers and they got, you know, a great support, mention why. There's other places that I thought about, like the baseball or PTO or SARS, you know, that. Uh, a lot of them don't have, or the museum, a lot of them just don't have the money, you know, that we have, uh. You know, it's Stan too, I guess, you know, anyways, it's a, it's such a difficult, to me, a very complicated way to. Give out money to town, you know, so I just question like this.
We'll continue to work on it until we come up with a solution. All right. Uh, continue on Javier.
Yeah, so one quick, we, uh, may already mentioned apartment marketing manager position. Um, second one is that I spoke with government services last week. And I plan to now look around in the new year with, uh. Uh, working on the farmer's market, so, uh, one of what we wanted to do was, uh. Need to look back into getting some quotes to get a perspective for town council on what some of the work might be needed on farmer's market. Um, government services recommended I first look at. Um, and find at least two quotes for the grading and paving in the parking lot, since we have issues similar to that road up in Van Cleve. Uh, just big holes, um, one additional thing I spoke with town council about back in. November or October was that, um, through the pillars, uh, within the, uh. Um, it started, grabbed a lot of moisture over the years and starting to kind of deteriorate a little bit. And then the third one and one of the recommendations would be to just replace the lights and fans. Um, the, you know, laser falling off like we talked about two months ago. So what I'll do, um, is, um. Work on quotes on those three items and then present them back. I gave kind of a roadmap to town council a few months ago. Um, to give a little bit of perspective on that, but I I think those three projects you might be able to work on this year within what's currently.
Just one, actually, one of the things that brought up that, uh, service need about the farmer's market, which might be worth considering is. It's just to take that chance. So are they necessary, so, you know, to have lights, so to have fans, unless they're come down, uh, they're worthless, so they just. And they just take up like this.
He can get what would be like considered a home. Style outdoor fan and to not.
You're you're exactly on it, they're not. The bill's point, the recommendation is like you you would hire somebody with something that can get up that high. And you you could probably save money on the equipment on that point, just to get rid of all the fans and then replace those lights up there. And just do it all at once rather than piecemeal, uh, I think we have a habit of replacing one thing at a time, but that ends up. Adding up as you guys know. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys an update because the truck kind of threw me for a loop and I didn't want to thank you guys, well, we're on the back, but. That's not on the front of the stove at this point.
The other thing that just came up with two is, you know, George really involved the. Hundred contractors, you know, that are local, that can do this kind of working, so they actually get some business because, you know. You have to search out who's available and where they are, that's not easy, but you might know some, uh, some other people might know contractors that are. Around here who do that kind of work, it's just, it's not a big job, and a lot of these contractors want big jobs, and unless we did it the way. It's reasonable if they do the job, you know, we're gonna be in the same situation in three months when the market's open.
So pass along any recommendations, I think at least getting three, at at least some experience has been very good. Um, and then usually it is smaller people, because we never have those big projects that expect them that you're town of. Yes, I was gonna include that during the, uh, town attorney, but, um, one item I was looking through, uh, our FOIA compliance. And the policy for remote participation is that, um, in the state code is that town council should each year. Um, review their remote participation policy and then vote on what their remote participation policy is. We had a previous one that, uh, Mr. Wallace, uh, drafted back in twenty two or maybe even earlier. Due to COVID and then we have, um, but speaking with Jim, here's a revised, a little bit more cleaner, a little bit more readable pause. Policy, um, the draft is pretty straightforward, it's the same as. The policy we've had, we've been previously working on as a town council with remote participation. Only real addition that's used is the end, it clearly states that there needs to be an annual adoption. There's not much to it, but I would recommend that it becomes something that is a habit with the annual meeting. Um, to prove this as a, or to adopt a remote, uh, participation policy.
The General Assembly shouldn't put these kind of requirements in as. You know, statewide law, because nobody remembers to do the, it's an invitation to, uh. Uh, have the law violated, that nobody remembers. Who would? But this will give us a chance at least to remember to do this each year, as long as you. Uh, want to continue to do remote participation, which. As all of you know, from time to time comes in handy.
Yeah, so this might be an opportunity to be finding a void on folks' error this time next.
One question about that, to specifically, really, remotely, um. In a meeting, can you vote? Yes.
Yes, so.
Yes, now, you have to have, you have to meet the core requirements for the in-person participation.
Oh, so that would be a core person.
I don't know, I have to look at the stat, this is called a convoluted statute for remote participation. But the the general rule is that you have to have a core present. At the, at the, at the physically present at the meeting to allow somebody to participate remotely.
All right, anybody else? Mayor, I was sure. I did want to talk to, uh, the. There's a gentleman in the short meeting and, uh, he had reached out to me. Uh, he had been about seven about it, he had the opportunity to approach it. The Univar Building, he wants to come and talk to the, uh. The town council, he'd like to be the person, uh, his idea for the Univar Building is that he was thinking about maybe, uh. Turn it into an indoor video event. And, uh, when they're not doing radio events, he would like to make the blowing open for community event, maybe a music event. Or whatever, and, uh, he also, uh, told me that. If we don't acquire the, I'll stop and you'll be more than one, work with the towns to. Allow us to park some of our equipment there, maybe the truck or whatever. He really wants to work with us on that, but, uh, he was gonna come down next meeting and, uh, like to bring the proposal to. And one of the things is if that. If we do decide to do that, we would have the reason to light act, like productive, like agricultural. That would have the animal down there.
You you'd need a special use permit for the.
But, uh. Like one of y'all knows, uh, to kind of keep that in your head and have any idea. We know all we have, uh, when there's comments from the public, all the agenda.
And the next meeting, town council next Tuesday.